And he teaches communication and education courses there part-time. After the invocation, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance led today by Commissioner Phil Diamond. Everybody please stand.
Thank you. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we are so grateful today for this great country, for the freedoms that we have, for the ability to commemorate in peace a very somber and important anniversary yesterday. Father, we're grateful for this city and for the peace that we have here, for the cooperation. We thank you for the mayor and the city council and everyone that is a part of it. And Father, I pray that each one will have an understanding of the times to know what to do. We thank you, dear God, for everything you give us, and I pray, Father, that we'll be good stewards of all that we have. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
Call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll to make a termination of quorum, please?
Commissioner Diamond?
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Here.
Commissioner Stewart?
Here.
Commissioner Sheehan?
Here.
Commissioner Lyman?
Here.
Commissioner Ings?
Here.
Mayor Dyer?
Here.
Mayor Yola Quorum?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's take up for consideration the minutes of the August 29, 2011 workshop agenda review and city council meetings.
Sure.
Motion by Commissioner Ortiz. He beat you to the punch, Commissioner Lyman. It's the first time in about two years, I think, second by Commissioner Sheehan. All right. All in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries.
September the 15th through October the 15th, it is a very special month in the city of Orlando and throughout the United States as it is Hispanic Heritage Month. And in attendance today with us are a number of folks from the Hispanic community, including members of the mayor's Ola Advisory Committee and the Hispanic Heritage Kickoff event sponsors. Would you guys stand and be recognized, please? And I would like to call on Commissioner Ortiz for introductory remarks for the Hispanic Heritage Proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank you, Mayor, and Commissioners, for celebrating the Hispanic Heritage Month for the fifth year. It's been 498 years since Juan Ponce de Leon first came to Florida. Every time we celebrate the influence of a particular culture in America, it reminds us that we are what we are, the greatest nation in the world, because of the mix of cultures and values. I pray to our Lord that we continue to unite, add our positive attributes, and get rid of the negative. We celebrate the great contributions of Hispanic heritage, what they have made to our nation, but more so, we celebrate a nation that has embraced our Hispanic culture. So, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone.
I have a proclamation, and then we'll come down and do some pictures. Whereas, from September 15th through October 15th, America celebrates the culture and traditions of our Hispanic citizens. And whereas, on September 15th, it was chosen as the starting point for the celebration because it is the anniversary of independence in five Latin American countries: Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. In addition, Mexico and Chile celebrate their independence days on September 16th and 18th, respectively. And whereas, the 2011 National Hispanic Heritage Month theme is keeping the promise, unity, strength, and leadership. And whereas, during Hispanic Heritage Month, our country celebrates and recognizes the rich political, economic, social, and cultural influence of Hispanics in the United States. And whereas, when celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month, we learn of other cultures that have shaped our country, reminding us that cultural heritage is something that must be recognized, valued, celebrated, and shared. And whereas, the city of Orlando, in conjunction with the Hispanic community and all city residents, join together to recognize the proud history and rich cultural of Hispanic Americans in our community. Now therefore, I, Buddy Dyer, Mayor of the City of Orlando, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2011, as Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Orlando. And we will be kicking off Hispanic Heritage Month on the 15th in the rotunda, and we have a theme every year, and this year it's a Brazilian theme, so the food and music will be Brazilian heritage. And if everybody that's here for the Hispanic Heritage Kickoff could come to the front, a good day to celebrate a championship in the city of Orlando. we'll take a picture or two. Our own Orlando City Lions Soccer Club won the USL Pro Championship, defeating the Harrisburg Commissioner Ortiz, would you join?
And anybody who wants to be Hispanic.
City Islanders on September 3rd at the Florida Citrus Bowl in a shootout, which was quite All right. exciting. And we have the owners of the team, Phil Rollins and John Bonner, are here. We have head coach Adrian Heath behind me here, assistant coach Ian Fuller, goalkeeping coach Marco Machada, and team doctor, Dr. Jay Albright. And I'm going to turn the mic over to either Phil or Adrian to introduce players or otherwise make remarks.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Thank you, city council. It's an absolute honor and a pleasure to represent the city of Orlando this year in the USL Pro Championship. We were delighted with the reception, the city, the fans, and the businesses and the organizations of the city gave to us, and we were absolutely thoroughly delighted to bring back a championship in our first year. The coach knows we have to do it again next year, so no pressure on him. But we're looking forward to defending our championship and for having many, many more years of success. I'll introduce Adrian Heath to introduce the players to you, but again, thank you for all your help and assistance, and we look forward to many more years of success in Orlando.
Thank you, Phil. As the coach, I'd just like to endorse really what Phil said and thank the city for their incredible support this year. It was a very bold move for us to move from Austin, Texas, but so far, so good, and everybody's received us incredibly well, and we've had incredible support from the people of Orlando. And from the players' point of view, I know how pleased they've been with the move that we've made and the reception that we've had here in Orlando. So, I'd just like to introduce you to a few of my players this year. Eric Cusdruck, Jamie Watson, stand up for guys, Rob Valentino, Ian Fuller, who's my assistant and player, Tom Bonner, Alex Wolf, Kieran Bernard, Justin Foggio, Dennis Chen, Marcus Makedo is our goalkeeper coach, and Dr. Jay Albright, our physician at the back. Thank you very much, everybody.
I have one more thing. We have a complaint from the mayor that he didn't have a jersey, so we thought we'd rectify that.
Okay, you're not getting away quite that quick.
Whereas, on Saturday, September 3rd, 2011, the Orlando City Soccer Club won the USL Pro Championship at the Florida Citrus Bowl, defeating the Harrisburg City Islanders. And whereas, the Lions, as the club is known, having already brought Orlando its first professional soccer championship in a decade. Whereas, the Orlando City Soccer Club has received four All-League awards for Goalkeeper of the Year, Defender of the Year, Coach of the Year, and Most Valuable Player. And whereas, the Orlando City Soccer Club not only led the league in attendance and had the highest attendance in the USA outside of the MLS, but also surpassed 11,000 people at the USL Pro Championship final. Now therefore, I, Buddy Dyer, Mayor of the City of Orlando, hereby do proclaim Monday, September 12th, 2011, as Orlando City Lions Day in the city of Orlando. Let's move right into Mayor's update. Ten years ago yesterday, our nation was shocked and saddened by the terrorist attacks of September 11th. Nearly, well, 2,977 civilians, military personnel, firefighters, and law enforcement officers died that day. To pay tribute to those who lost their lives, yesterday I was joined by city council, OPD Police Chief Paul Rooney, OFD Fire Chief John Miller, and members of the OPD and OFD to host a September 11th memorial service at the Lake Yola Park Amphitheater. It was extremely well-attended, very moving ceremony. Following that, we marched from Lake Yola to Firehouse One, where 343 candles were lit to honor the 343 New York firefighters who perished, and 60 candles were lit to honor the 60 NYPD officers and Port Authority law enforcement officers who lost their lives. I want to thank both chiefs and the fire department and the police department for putting on a very fitting tribute to the 9/11 victims. I had an opportunity last week to do one of my work-alongs, and I did it with Joel Miller, who is the homeless outreach coordinator for the Central Florida Commission on Homelessness, who works in our downtown area. And Joel is on the streets about eight to 10 hours every day, engaging homeless individuals to help connect them up with local services, how to acquire ID, medical care, transitional housing, and it's a pretty challenging job, but I was very impressed with how he moves around the streets. And I actually met one person out at the Goodwill Self-Sufficiency Center that had housing now, but had been homeless when he got a job working on the Amway Center, and was able to use the money from that job to get housing. And he said that the work on the Amway Center transformed his life and put him on a better path, an upward path. So, that was kind of rewarding to be out and hear that report. And Joel has probably assisted over 400 homeless individuals since he's been out there, and he told me he's placed 25 people into housing. Just before this meeting, I joined Commissioner Ings and the Orange County Health Department to talk about the resolution that's on today's agenda, which will urge all Orlandoans to consider the public health hazards associated with secondhand smoke and to urge them not to smoke in public parks where children commonly play. I want to remind you, this evening at 5:01, we will have the first of two public hearings on our budget. We hold these hearings every year to ensure that our residents have an opportunity to be part of the process if they so choose. It's part of our open and transparent process to create a budget. As we have discussed, Orlando is in the best shape, best financial shape, of any major city in Florida, and this budget is a reflection of that hard-earned reality. It's a balanced budget that requires no increases in taxes and keeps money in the pockets of our residents, no additional cuts or reductions in services, and maintains our key investment in public safety. So, we'll have a hearing tonight, and then we'll have a hearing a week from Monday, or next Monday. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda, and that's a number of items that are acted upon through a single vote of council. We have deleted at Agenda Review, item I-4, and I have a note here, Byron, that you would like us to delete. Where are you? B-4? Item B-4, so council will defer item B-4 as well. So, item B-4 and I-4 will be coming off the agenda. With that, we will move to Commissioner Diamond on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. I was also at the 9/11 remembrance at Lake Yola last night, and a lot's been said about 9/11 and the fact it's been 10 years ago, as hard as that is to believe. And I think everybody can remember where they were and what they were doing 10 years ago, and will probably never forget. But I think it's probably just as important to continue to remember the victims and remember the heroism of so many people that day, and also continue to remember all the heroic acts that our first responders and our military do for us right now, day-to-day. So, I want to thank them for what they do, and again, pass along my thoughts and prayers for all the victims of 9/11. Around the district, we've got a few things happening and a few things to report on. Tomorrow, at lunchtime, we're going to have a meeting to set up a Relay for Life Committee and event out in the Lee Vista area, out of Vista Lakes. There are a number of these held around the city to raise funds for the American Cancer Society. We've had them in our district, down in North Lake Park, and also at Boone High School, and hopefully we'll get one rolling in the Lee Vista, Vista Lakes area in the not-too-distant future and help fight cancer. Also, we recently held a public hearing to talk about the possible extension of the downtown circulator. For those of you who may have been following, this council recently approved plans to run the circulator from Thornton Park to Paramore and then around the west side of I-4 so that people can get around more easily. And this proposal, if it hopefully happens sometime in the future, will enable people to go north of downtown and south of downtown on circulators as well. It was a good hearing, and I wanted to thank everybody that was involved with it. A couple other events I wanted to mention, I wanted to thank the Conway Community Council for helping to organize the Conway Community Cleanup on Saturday. It's great anytime people come together to help clean up and contribute to community service in their neighborhoods and help make the community better, so I wanted to thank them. Also, I wanted to thank St. Luke's Episcopal Church. They had a very nice 9/11 service yesterday with great music, and I really enjoyed that and wanted to thank them for inviting me over. A couple of things on the agenda I'd like to mention. The mayor mentioned, I think he mentioned, item A-5, which is the resolution relating to smoking. I do hope that people will be considerate of others when they decide when and where to smoke in our public parks and public areas, and hopefully make our community safer and more comfortable for everybody. Item C-1, which is the minutes from the municipal planning board. We've got, I think, three projects from District One, all of which are good, all of which sound very good, actually, and I look forward to seeing them all happen. One is the project on Michigan Street, just east of Orange Avenue, called Copely Square. That would be a townhome development over there, and I know there's a lot of support for that in the area, and people would look forward to seeing that done. And then on 436, we've got two projects just north of the airport. One is the DDR project, which is on the east side of the airport, which was started and then stopped a couple of years ago, and it'll include a Target store and some other buildings. And then on the west side, we've got the West Side Lee Vista Project, which is a good project as well. So, I wish all these projects well, and looking forward to seeing them done and create jobs and create good development. Also, I'd like to compliment the folks on the staff in charge of item D-4, which is a drop-in opportunity at a couple of our community centers. This is for people that may have dropped out of high school, and it offers a place to go and an opportunity to drop back into high school. And I think if we can get people to do that, I think that's good for everybody, good for the students, and good for the community. And then last, I'd like to thank and recognize item H-5, which is a grant to help the police department buy police radios. This is a federal grant, and I think has been set up here many times before. If we can have the federal government pay for this instead of the city paying for this, that's a good thing. These radios are needed, and I'm glad to see this grant happen. So, with that, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
We'll move to District Two. Commissioner Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I want to echo your words and the words of Commissioner Diamond, reference to yesterday's 9/11 celebration memorial ceremony. The words of the mayor, Chaplain Regan, Chief Rooney, and Chief Miller were both moving and deeply felt, so I want to thank you for those words, and once again, express our sincere condolences to the families of all those that passed away in that tragic event up in New York. Our prayers are still with them, we'll never forget. Second item would be that unfortunately, we had to cancel our District Two Family Festival because of raining and lightning on Friday night. I know it was going to be a great event, but you know, sometimes we cannot predict the weather, and this was one of those occasions where the weather was really, it changed on us really quick. We weren't expecting that rain and lightning, so... But we will plan the event for October. We'll probably combine it with some Oktoberfest event, too. So, I'd like to once again extend my most sincere thanks to Mr. Hector Nicer Nazaria, a graffiti artist that came from New York and who visited our city during Labor Weekend to paint for free a mural of Hall of Fame Puerto Rican baseball player Roberto Clemente for the Azalea Park Little League. So, once again, we're very grateful, and for those of you that have not seen that piece of art, you're welcome to stop by the Azalea Park Little League Baseball Field right at Lake Barton Village. You guys will be impressed by such a piece of art. It was really moving, too. And last but not least, I want to wish the most exciting and the greatest happy birthday ever to my aide, Anna. She probably thought I forgot. Somebody messed it up, because somebody put some happy birthday stuff by her desk. I said, "There you go, somebody ruined it." I wanted her to think that I have forgotten, but I didn't forget. So, happy birthday, Anna. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District Three. Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your comments last night. I want to say a special round of thanks to Chief Miller and Chief Rooney. Appreciate so much your work last night and the words that you said. It just makes me so proud to work alongside you and work alongside the men of OFD and OPD. So, thank you very much for your comments last night. A couple of things coming up I'd just like to share. We have two new businesses that opened up this past Saturday in College Park, the Sweat Gym and La Petite Pleasure, a little French bakery. So, I think probably if we can do both of those at the same time, swing by the French bakery and then go by the gym, but they both are just opening up in downtown College Park. We're excited about having them, and they're both already active in the main street in College Park, and I appreciate them. So, if you get a chance, swing by. Tonight, the College Park Neighborhood Association and the Orange County Public Schools are hosting a special joint meeting to talk about the schools in College Park. There's a lot of changes that have gone over there. Y'all know about the renovations on Mari Road with Lee Middle School, with the rebuilding of Edgewater High School, the changes at Princeton, and of course, changes at Lake Silver. So, we're going to get a chance to get an update on all four of the schools tonight, 6 o'clock, at the Edgewater High School Auditorium. This Saturday is also the annual Florida Coastal Cleanup, and two of the lakes that have been identified is the Park Lake in the southern portion of my district, and of course, Lake Ivanhoe. So, come join us. We expect to have about 75 to 100 people out there. Last year, we did a great job cleaning up the shoreline, and I appreciate all those who came and were part of that. And then I also want to congratulate Edgewater on their win this past weekend at Edgewater High School, but I do that to mention that on the 23rd, the College Park Rotary will be doing their annual barbecue for their home game at Edgewater High School. I mention that because that money goes right back into the schools. The College Park Rotary takes that money, uses it to scholarship kids going to college as well as scholarship individual groups at the school during the course of the school year. So, get a chance to come out, come join us for Edgewater's next home game. On the agenda, let me just mention two things real briefly. On H-3 and H-4, we have the renewal for two of our Neighborhood Watch workers over there, the coordinator and the other staff person over there, Georgiana and Kia. They do such a wonderful job. The last two years, we've had a great leadership in the country in terms of what we do, and Chief Rooney, I know how much you appreciate what they do. I can tell you, having them in the neighborhoods has been a wonderful thing for our city, and I just want to make sure we give a couple of kudos to some great people that work hard. And of course, as Commissioner Diamond mentioned, H-5 is another opportunity for the federal government to help us fund portable radios. And every time we get a chance to leverage what we do and bring that money in, it's good for our citizens because it saves our citizens money. So, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
We'll move on to District Four. Commissioner Sheehan.
Thank you, Mayor. Over the weekend, South Street Ministries and OPD had a bike rodeo and bike repair at Reece Terrace, and they fixed about 100 bicycles. I want to thank the police department. They did a great job and taught a lot of kids how to ride who didn't know how to ride bicycles, and so that was a great thing. And the Winter Park Methodist Church has just been a wonderful partner. We've given out over 800 bikes at Reece Terrace to underprivileged children to ride to school, to Howard Middle School. A couple of things coming up I'd just like to share, we have two new businesses that opened up this past Saturday in College Park, the Sweat Gym and La Petite Pleasure, it's a little French bakery. So I think probably if we can do both of those at the same time, swing by the French Bakery and then go by the gym, but they both are just opening up in downtown College Park, we're excited about having them, and they're both already active in the main street in College Park, and I appreciate them, so if you get a chance, swing by. Tonight, the College Park Neighborhood Association and the Orange County Public Schools are hosting a special joint meeting to talk about the schools in College Park. There's a lot of changes that have gone over there. Y'all know about the renovations on Mari Road with Lee Middle School, with the rebuilding of Edgewater High School, the changes at Princeton and of course changes at Lake Silver. So we're going to get a chance to get an update on all four of the schools tonight, 6:00 at the Edgewater High School Auditorium. This Saturday is also the annual Florida Coastal Cleanup, and two of the lakes that have been identified is the Park Lake in the southern portion of my district and of course Lake Ivanhoe, so come join us. We expect to have about 75 to 100 people out there. Last year, we did a great job cleaning up the shoreline and I appreciate all those who came and were part of that. And then I also want to congratulate Edgewater on their win this past week in Edgewater High School, but I do that to mention that on the 23rd, the College Park Rotary will be doing their annual barbecue for their home game at Edgewater High School. I mention that because that money goes right back into the schools. The College Park Rotary takes that money, uses it to scholarship kids going to college as well as scholarship individual groups at the school during the course of the school year. So get a chance to come out, come join us for Edgewater's next home game. On the agenda, let me just mention two things real briefly, on H-3 and H-4, we have the renewal for two of our Neighborhood Watch workers over there, the coordinator and the other staff person over there, Georgiana and Kia. They do such a wonderful job. The last two years, we've had a great leadership in the country in terms of what we do and Chief Rooney, I know how much you appreciate what they do, I can tell you, having them in the neighborhoods has been a wonderful thing for our city and I just want to make sure we give a couple of kudos to some great people that work hard. And of course, as Commissioner Diamond mentioned, H-5 is another opportunity for the federal government to help us fund portable radios. And every time we get a chance to leverage what we do and bring that money in, it's good for our citizens because it saves our citizens money, so I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
We'll move on to District 4, Commissioner Sheen.
Thank you, Mayor. Over the weekend, South Street Ministries and OPD had a bike rodeo and bike repair at Reece Terrace and they fixed about 100 bicycles. I want to thank the police department, they did a great job and taught a lot of kids how to ride who didn't know how to ride bicycles, and so that was a great thing. And the Winter Park Methodist Church has just been a wonderful partner. We've given out over 800 bikes at Reece Terrace to underprivileged children to ride to school to Howard Middle School and Hillcrest Elementary School, and I know those bikes are getting used because we got to see what the condition some of them were in and they all got fixed over the weekend. We actually fixed one wheelchair as well, so you never know when someone's going to come up and have some need, but they actually were able to fix Mr. Arthur's wheelchair too, so I want to thank them very, very much for their support and having a great event. The Sperry Fountain at Lake Iola has been renovated, it looks great, it's now opened back up, and I just really want to thank Facilities because they recast the Sperry Fountain. I guess it had been damaged too much to repair, but it's been recast, it looks really beautiful and the urns have new tops to them so they won't rust out. And I know we still have the old fountain, I don't know if there's something that we can do with that to display it in a public building or something like that, but I think that would be a really good reuse, Mayor, and you know, I hate to see that just get melted down or something because that is the actual historic piece, but I'm very excited to see it. Over the weekend, I was able to go check it out and it really looks wonderful, so if you want to get a chance to go run by Lake Iola, we got the big fountain done and the little fountain, so it's really looking nice over there. Regarding 9/11, you know, the events were terribly sad, a lot of the things on television and people are only now able to talk about surviving 9/11 after 10 years. And something that I would just like to say about the police department and firemen, and there's been a lot of debate in this country about pensions and things like that, and you know what, the only way that someone's going to be able to risk their life and run into a burning building or you know, jump in front of gunfire or anything like that is if they know their families are going to get taken care of. And I think it's really unfortunate that there's been a debate in this country about police and fire pensions, they earn it and it's the way we take care of these families when they're putting their lives on the line every single day. So you know, as much as people like to you know reminisce and things like that and they feel very strongly, I think they need to remember about what police and fire do for them every single day, putting their lives on the line, and instead of maligning our public servants, we need to support them and make sure they're paid appropriately. Something that really struck me and something that I saw during the coverage was one commercial, it talked about a model that's on our money, it's e pluribus unum, out of many one, and I think after September 11th, we all really came together to deal with that tragedy, it's been unfortunate that there's been a lot of acrimony since, and I think if there's one legacy that we can take away from that terrible day is that we're at our best when we unite together instead of fighting our public servants and fighting each other. Thank you, Mayor.
Move to District 5, Commissioner Lyman.
Thank you. Just a few mentions before I go into the agenda, I want to give a real special thanks to Chief Miller, not just for 9/11, but the past week, I had a personal experience and I'm so appreciative of you, Chief Miller, for your personal help to get me to the hospital and take good care of me and all of those good-looking guys you brought with you. They did their parents' pride. Boy, I was impressed, they can help me any day. And to give me a ride in our new equipment, it worked real good. I just want to say, for anyone needing the fire department to do anything regarding emergency services, we are more than able to do you well. I was impressed. And of course, Chief Rooney, for making sure Kevin stayed with me until my other children came and calling every 10 minutes, so I appreciate all of you. But I had the great pleasure of meeting other fire department chiefs at the hospital, must have been two of them, two others, and lots of our staff there, and I met the cutest little police officer. She must have weighed 10 pounds, no, at least 100 pounds dripping wet, Ms. Rosario. I said, "Girl, you look just like Sam Eads did in 1973, he was so tiny." I'd never seen a police officer that tiny before, and then I met her. So I want to say a real special thanks to them and to Orlando Medical Center, the doctors were excellent, the technicians, to everyone, this great, great service, I can't say enough. So I want you to know from the bottom of my heart and the heart of my family, how much we appreciate you, what you do for us and what you do for the city. Thank you very much. And of course, we all know 9/11 was an infamous day in the city, in our country, and the service was great all day on yesterday, so thanks for that and the service we celebrated at the park near. A few other things I want to mention under the just honables. Saturday, we had the Caribbean Community Health Fair and Summit, and thank you, Doctor, for introducing me. Don't go to sleep on me, it was a great, great introduction from the health department, I appreciate you Ken so much. Over 2,000 people, almost every year, were there with the number of prostate exams, the number of mammograms, tests for high cholesterol and whatnot that we have, it's just a great preventative medicine and turns out those people who are in trouble to move on to get treatment. My great, great friend, Dr. Francois, is someone I've loved long before I was elected, long, long, just like you, Linda, you know, we've known one another for a long, long, long time, so thank you very much. That was on Saturday, and then of course, we were with Reverend Mills with the Baptist Convention at the convention hall over at Orange County, over 20,000, we think there were more, but the day we were there with, I think Commissioner Eads and a few of us, about 20,000 people. Every time those conventions come to town, that's an economic impact in our community and it's great goodwill. Now of course, I have to talk about Bethune-Cookman winning the MEAC SWAC. They beat the stew out of Perivue. I don't remember the numbers, does anybody, I just know they won.
63 to 14.
63 to 14. I knew when I left it was 40-something, it was just so much, I just left. But that was a great game and that too is a growing game that brings economic impact. You know, the jobs and opportunities are just so important to me that I have to keep mentioning that because it is the economic engine that keeps us going and keeps jobs moving in the community, so I want to mention that. And for all of you, I am asking everyone to join me and when you're out walking, to remove from our street corners on the right of way, you have a right to do this, those obnoxious signs. I have asked Mike Rose if we can start calling those signs, get them out there and let's start charging those people. I know in my district, they're so obnoxious, it's just litter that I hate in the community. So when I'm out walking, I pull those signs up, put them in the nearest dumpster or whatnot, so, and I only see them in certain parts of town. So when you're out there, help us move those signs. If they want to advertise, they can go to 94.5 or go on the billboards that are already approved, but to do that to a community, to add the litter to us, for us, is just beyond my comprehension, so just want to bring that up. And also, Chief Rooney, I know we've done a great job over at Givens. This morning, when Kevin and I were out at 6:00, walked right past the guy doing drugs, I said, "Kevin, didn't you see that guy doing drugs back there? Do I have to call 911?" So that's what we did and he did the rest, he was very observant because I didn't remember how the man looked after we passed and he was able to do that. I just thank you for the work that's going on in the community that is helping us achieve some sense of safety and security that has absolutely nothing to do with foreign terrorists, but the terrorists that we have to deal with here in terms of crime. So thank you very much. Now, on to agenda items. On Item B, what was that, B-1? B-2? I'm sorry, where is that? B, 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 B-1. You know, I just cannot vote yes for Alabama firm. I just cannot, Phantom and Byron and I went over this, I cannot see our dollars going to Alabama of all of this, between Alabama, Mississippi, no. We've got enough people in Florida, I think, during these economic times, that is my vote, I cannot vote for it. I know there are certain criteria we have, but I just cannot go into that. I think there's going to be money in relocating here and traveling here, and in the end, it equals out to whatever the Florida firm would have been, so it's no. But I was glad to see on B-3 that we have a contract to cover manholes. Charles knows that, I call him at least once a month, Charles ran that. There's a broken manhole in front of the Western Shopping Center on Colonial. Please, whoever's doing this contract, ask HD Supply to go and repair that one before somebody breaks the neck on it. It's on Colonial, next to the tag shop, if we can get that done. Byron and I have already dealt with a couple of other issues on another agenda item. So I think that was B-4 and I-4. I want to compliment Item I-5, there was an achievement of 43% participation for MWBE. It's a very, very small contract and to go over, oh, it's over 43% actually, so I wanted to compliment that firm and making that happen. On Agenda Item I-6, the city's share of that unique contract was 12.7% MBE, 4.1% MBE, but there was no mention, since this was divided with city and county, of the county's share. The county has at least a 12.9% at least goals, there was no mention of that, and I think Orange County has to come up and look at these small businesses just as we do. We're keeping people employed, they darn well need to do the same thing. These small minority businesses, these women-owned businesses, and we've got to make them come to the place we are, at least meet their own goals. So whoever's handling that contract, Mayor, I am just asking us to stay tight on this kind of economic situation, we're doing well, but we're doing well because we've made sure a lot of small businesses in our community are doing well. Thank you very much.
Okay, and on to District 6, Commissioner Enges.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to say thanks to Chief Miller and Chief Rooney in reference to 9/11 remembered memorial service that we had there at Lake Iola Park and it was good, and it was even better because it allowed so many of our public to attend. And the idea of the flags with the names of the persons that suffered at 9/11 with their names on it and people taking those flags and making contact with the family members, I think was a great idea, so that was obviously good. We had great presentation and great support from all of our city council and that was just really good too. And I'd like to say this past Saturday, I hosted the Third Annual Happy Healthy Kids' Day at the Dr. James R. Smith Center on Bruton Boulevard, and that was from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. We had such a magnificent turnout, lots of support for our children. This was a time that we celebrate the remembrance of Morrissey Brown Jr., he was about 13 years old, and he died of a disease, adrenolucid dystrophy, which is an inherited disease, and as a result, we have been, we being his mother and I, have been doing this at the Smith Center for the past three years. His mother, June Brown, and has other children that are with her today, but this is just truly heartfelt because this little boy at 13 years old, just full of life and could not control his destiny any longer. But what we want to do is enhance the quality of life for our kids and our teens through healthy living, and this was one of those ways of doing that and we had some tremendous community support from that. We also had Universal Studios of Orlando and SeaWorld as two of our corporate sponsors that helped us with that event, and we had so many local vendors. I remember specifically the students, the nursing students from Valencia Community College, that they were on hand to help us out and so many other vendors there too. And then also, Item A-5, which is dealing with the resolution for smoke-free public parks in the city of Orlando. Mayor, I want to thank you for assisting me with the press conference earlier today. And then also in attendance is Dr. Novello and Dr. Kevin Sharon with the Orange County Health Department. Dr. Novello is a former United States Surgeon General and she heads our, she's the board chair of our All-In Health Board, and Linda Sutherland, who's also here too and was a part of the press conferences, retired former Orange County School Board Member, and now she's a member of the Healthy Start Coalition. And so, all of our All-In Board members that are here, would y'all just raise your hands so that we can see who's all here to support us, and then also with the Health Department too, our supporting cast, y'all can raise your hand as well, so we can see all of that support that we have here with us for that event. I'd like to say thanks to Assistant City Attorney Kyle Shepherd and also to Kathy Russell, our Government Relations Director, for their help in putting together this resolution. And this resolution really is looking for an opportunity for us to have some say as it relates to smoking in public parks because we do want to protect our children. We want our children to be healthy, we want them to play smoke-free so that they are not injured by any secondhand smoke, and we know that secondhand smoke can cause death. And also too, our parks, we had the SWAT team, the students working against tobacco from the Orange County Health Department to actually come here to city council probably sometime last year, and they brought along with them and introduced to council bags, mounds of cigarette butts that they collected out of Barker Park and also Iola Park. And of course, even though cigarettes were in these plastic bags, you can still smell the smoke from the cigarettes here in council chambers, so it is really deadly and we need to protect our children. And we need to set examples where our children do not do those things that some adults want to do, but we know that if we can protect our kids in public parks, that we're doing some great things. And I would just like to say that on May 2011, a survey was conducted by Salter Mitchell Research, and their survey, they surveyed Orange County registered voters, and they found strong support for local laws and policies that would make public places tobacco-free, and this included support for banning tobacco use in local parks. And some of the key findings of that report, the independent telephone survey, where there were about 1,004 registered voters, 91% agreed local governments should take steps to address health concerns in their communities, and 60% support policies that would ban tobacco use in public parks, and strong support for tobacco-free parks is higher than strong opposition. And then 88% support banning tobacco on all K through 12 school property, indoors and out, for students, staff and visitors. So we know that that is a health issue and we as policymakers have an opportunity to solicit some assistance from the Florida Legislature that would give us an opportunity to regulate some of the smoking in parks as it relates to our kids. Now, I just want to say this too, Harris Rosen is also a part of our All-In Board, and Harris Rosen has a no-smoking policy throughout all of his properties that he owned, and he's found that many of his employees use less sick time, they're more prompt on the job, they're more prompt in productivity. Then also Dick Bachelor is serving on this board with us, Dick Bachelor Consulting and Properties, he's a part of this, and we can go on and on, and I just want to say that the American Cancer Society is a part in helping us too, Florida Hospital, Orlando Health, and also UCF, so we're looking to do some great things here. At this time, I do have a video I'd like for you to see. Ed, if you could, run that. Ed, if you could, run that.
Secondhand smoke contains over 7,000 chemicals, 70 of which can cause cancer. Make our parks, workplaces, and public spaces smoke-free. Visit AllInClearAir.com today. Sponsored by the Department of Health and Human Services in All In.
This is my plea to the public, and thank you, council, for being here to support us on this effort. And thank you, All In Board, for your help and your work that you're doing in the Orange County Health Department for trying to move forward to help keep our kids safe. And we want the public to realize, too, that our children need good, healthy areas to play in, and we can help with that. All we have to do is just really take a stance. So thank you, Mayor, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioners, are motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Eads, second by Commissioner Ortiz. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Let's, without objection, recess the city council meeting and convene the CRA meeting. Have some meeting minutes. Davon, does anybody need any explanation? We're accepting meeting minutes, number one on...
Move to accept.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Sheehan. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye.
Is that the first one there?
That was the first one.
Okay. On number two, Mayor?
Okay. Motion on number two.
I would like to motion, but I have a correction to make.
Okay. Commissioner Linum moves approval of the meeting minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sheehan. Is there discussion on the meeting minutes relating to the CRA?
Yes. I would like for the minutes to reflect my no vote and expressly state why I voted no. And that was, I indicated I voted no because I thought five years for demolition was too long. Very simple statement.
Okay. Davon, can you take note of that and correct the minutes to reflect exactly why, or as stated, Commissioner Linum's vote was a no vote on the demolition contract?
Thank you.
And I think I'd probably need to do the same thing, since we both the same way on that one.
Okay. Make that same addition. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. We will adjourn the CRA meeting. We will reconvene the city council meeting, and we'll move to hearings. In accordance with the Greater Orlando Aviation Authority Act of the City Charter, GOA has submitted a proposed preliminary budget for fiscal year 2011-2012 to the city council for review and for a public hearing.
Mayor, would you allow me just to go back just a second? I don't want to... The vote that we just had to amend it was a, it was a 6-1 vote, with Commissioner Linum being the only no vote. Commissioner Diamond was not a no vote on this amendment.
Should have been, though.
I'm not sure. I just want to make sure that the information that we're doing, we are correcting the appropriate information, and the information does not show that Commissioner Diamond was a no vote.
Was that on the demolition?
Yes.
Yes. It's what we just amended.
Yeah. I was.
I thought he voted against it, too.
Yeah.
I know, there was three or four votes that we were, we had the same time. I'm just thinking that you can't, we can't amend, we can't make the change to Commissioner Diamond's change when it doesn't show, doesn't reflect him as a no vote on this issue.
I would need to correct that, too.
Could I suggest maybe the city clerk look at that over the next week or so, and then whatever it is, it is, and we can resolve it?
Yeah. I'm for doing whatever.
That's a fair point.
We can't undo what's, what didn't, what the records don't reflect.
Okay. Alana and Davon, will you guys sort through that?
We will. Thank you.
All right. Back on the hearing. I want to acknowledge that GOA Chairman Cesar Calvert and Executive Director Phil Brown are here with us today. Wave your hands out there so the camera can catch you. Before we open the public hearing, I just wanted to share a few good news facts regarding the airport. OIA has seen a almost 4% increase in overall passenger traffic for the first six months of the year, and international passenger traffic has led the way with over 5% growth. And that's thanks to increased service to a variety destinations, including France, Guatemala, and Panama. Under the leadership of Chairman Calvert and Phil, I'm confident that that level will continue to increase in another record-breaking year. All right. In addition, October 2nd marks the 30th anniversary of when Orlando International Airport went from municipal airfield to a world-class aviation facility with the dedication of a new $300 million terminal complex in 1981. There is a number of commemorative events that are going to occur during the month of October. But one that I want to specifically mention is on Sunday, October 2nd, from 2:00 to 5:00, the airport will host the Community Day in the main terminal. And it's a thank-you event for, to the community for the support that has been shown to the airport over the last 30 years. To the business at hand, the Aviation Authority approved its fiscal year 2011-2012 preliminary budget by a resolution adopted on August 17, 2011. In accordance with the city charter, GOA has submitted the budget to city council for review during a public hearing. Total budget for the Orlando International Airport is $385,783,000, funded primarily through non-airline revenues such as concessions. Total budget for the Orlando Executive Airport is $2.899 million, with most of that generated by commercial properties on the OEA property. And anything that's not contained in today's budget would come back as an item to be approved by city council after it's approved by the GOA Board as a change. Chairman Calvert or Phil, either one of you would like to address council before I open it up for public hearing? Okay, then. I will open this public hearing for public comment related to the GOA budget. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify or comment? Seeing none, I will close that. This does not take any further action other than the requirement for a public hearing. Anything else? Okay. Hey, by the way, while I'm thinking about it, I got a bunch of materials from Lou Frye, which did relate to how the airport was turned over, and it's, I will get that to you if you don't already have that. Thanks for being here. We will now move to hearings ordinances on second reading. Number one, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city of Orlando, Florida amending an ordinance that vacated, closed, and abandoned portions of East King Street and Spruce Street, both generally located between Interstate 4 and Dade Avenue, removing an outdated condition of abandonment relating to the dedication of right-of-way for a light rail corridor, providing for severability, correction of scrivenor's errors, and an effective date.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Anyone from the public would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners. Hearing now and all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. All right. Ordinances, first reading, number one.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Orlando, Florida relating to firearms and ammunition, amending or repealing parts of the Orlando City Code relating to the regulation of firearms or ammunition in response to recent clarification of state preemption, providing for severability, correction of scrivenor's errors, and an effective date.
During the 2011 session of the Florida Legislature, the legislature adopted House Bill Number 45 relating to the regulation of firearms. And it clarifies the intent of the Florida Legislature to declare all ordinances and regulations null and void, which have been enacted by any local jurisdiction other than state and federal, which relates to firearms, ammunition, and components thereof. The Act includes civil penalties, including a fine of up to $5,000, removal from office for elected or appointed officials who violate the Act. So out of a very abundance of caution, we have thoroughly combed all of the ordinances of the city of Orlando. Jody, can you tell us, give us a general overview?
Thank you, Mayor. What we found was, of course, most of the enforcement against firearms has been by state law for many, many years now. But given the clarification of the preemption by the state legislature this year, we did review the city ordinances and found, I guess, sort of five substantive areas, and some of them had separate parts, that needed to be repealed. The first was a prohibition in that section one of the ordinance on carrying firearms on airport property. As you know, carrying firearms on the security airport property in the security area is regulated both by state and federal government. Section two dealt with a prohibition of citizens on bicycle patrol carrying firearms. I don't know that that even, I don't know if it's ever been enforced, but it was a provision that we needed to repeal. Section three dealt with discharge of a weapon within the city limits. Again, state law prohibits discharge in a public place, and according to the police chief, repeal of this ordinance is not going to have any public safety impact. Section four and section five dealt with the mayor's power to restrict the sale of firearms and ammunitions when we declared a state of emergency. Again, in practice, the state has generally declared the state of emergency as well, the governor, and the governor has the same powers as the mayor would have. And then section six is a ancient sort of provision for the issuance of hunting permits by the city of Orlando. No one can recall in recent recollection that there has been a hunting permit issued in the city, so we're just repealing that ordinance, although it has not been used for, well, as many years as I can recall.
How much is a hunting permit in the city of Orlando?
Probably $5. No, but you can't get one anymore.
What are you going to hunt?
All right, then. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this? Commissioner Linum, did you have a...
I just want to make sure my Second Amendment right is not disturbed. No, I'm kidding.
All right. Oh, let's see. Did we get a motion on this?
I move.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Eads. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. That completes our agenda, although we do have several general appearances.